Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with no one standing up for privilege of the floor, we'll move on to the consensus agenda items. I'd like to call for a motion to approve items numbers one through seven. Okay, I need a motion second first separate. No, no, I need a second of the motion to to vote on them. For a second, okay, it's been moved and seconded, it will separate number three and number seven needs a roll call vote, so we'll separate that also. All right, item three, Jason.
So this is super regarding the curriculum, the addition of the short story course. It had brought up to the board, I believe, close to year and a half, February, the idea was floating around, and I had some concerns with it. So I presented to the board and the superintendent prior that I had issues with the language and the topics that were included in the short stories that were selected for the curriculum. And I believe that we as the board should be the ones who set the tone for the education that develops and promotes good and virtuous character among our students. There's two selections that I noticed were still included in the curriculum. One story called Where Are You Going, Where Have You Been? This had a disturbing plotline that had an older man near his thirties menacing a fifteen year old girl. And in the end insinuates possible sexual assault and murder. The short story Greasy Lake, which effectively glorifies drug and alcohol use and general licentiousness by nineteen year olds. It refers to watching a girl take off her clothes, bringing, drinking beer and smoking pot. So in light of that, I would encourage the board to vote no on that.
All right, any other comments from the board members on that one?
Yeah, I'm just gonna add, and this did come, I did, basically, I did pull that apart. It was from Paul of Form 21, was his proposal. And there was a lit near readings there that I I read as well, and I had some concerns about. I believe that we said that it was supposed to be much safer for the curriculum council, and it did. Superintendent has approved it, but I'm just wanna back up that this did come up next.
All right. We'll leave that one as a separate vote from the other items that are there then. So I'll call for a vote for items one, two, four, five, and six. All those in favor of approving those five items, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The item three, I'll call for a vote for that item. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstaining. Vote fails. All right, and item seven, I'd like to direct the the clerk to conduct a roll call vote for our seeker agreement.
Yes.
Yes. Very good. All right, items number, sorry, the personnel items, call for motions except the personnel report as submitted. I'll move that, is there a second? Seconded, I'm gonna pull item numbers or hold item number six for Mr. Stack. Is there any other item to discuss or separate? All right, all those in favor of accepting items one through five and then seven through twenty-nine, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining, motion carries, Mr. Stack, item six.
Well, I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to introduce to you Melissa D. Vergilia. And Melissa is joining us from her position at Eritauana, where she has been a long term substitute for grade nine and youth. And Melissa's joining us very eagerly, she'd like to join the Ivy League team, and she's very, very excited to do so. She's coming to us from Buffalo State College for a master's degree there, as well as the undergraduate in mathematics. And for nothing but fantastic things, and when they were interviewing for a replacement for a permanent position not too long ago. Melissa had really stood out to the to the analysts, and we're very excited to have her, so welcome the board. And congratulations on becoming a fellow.
All those in favor then of accepting the appointment of Melissa D. Vergilio as a grant funded one point O FTE AIS math teacher at Eritau Middle School, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining, motion carries, welcome to the Falcon family. All right, Capitol Project Committee, I know we have a meeting coming up towards the end of the month. Okay, we'll talk about it in the the superintendent's hearing, Audit Committee, anything in there for that? All right. All right, Policy Committee, there's a deletion of policy thirty-four thirty. So I'd like to call for a motion that be resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent that the that we delete the policy thirty-four thirty. Uniform Violent and Disruptive Incident System. It's coming from a standing committee actually, so it's been moved and seconded already from there, any discussion of that item? Are all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining, motion carries, that item is deleted. Item four, from the Policy Committee, the first reading of the following policies. Policy fifteen-ten, regular board meeting and rule quorum and parliamentary procedure. Policy thirty-four thirty, diversity, equity, and inclusion in the district. Policy sixty-two twenty, temporary personnel. Policy eighty-two ten, safety conditions and prevention instruction. And policy eighty-two forty, instruction in certain subjects. Any item to discuss, because that again is coming from a standing committee?
I'd like to discuss a couple of policies, that's great.
Go ahead.
First one is the diversity, equity, and inclusion policy.
If it is, was fifteen-ten one of them you wanted to discuss, because if we would go, just go in order from the list there. Yeah.
Yes, I did have some comments on that one as well.
All right, why don't we start with that one, we'll revert, we'll go right down the line with any discussion?
So part of the changes in that policy pertains to public comment at board meetings. And it drafts more stringent language, kind of curtailing the ability of the public to make their comments known to the board. And I'm opposed to the policy to limit public comments to items that are only on the agenda, which is what's proposed in the policy. This would effectively curb overall accountability to important issues that may arise that community members believe should be brought publicly to a board. And effectively, if this policy is passed, an item that is not on the agenda, speech on that topic could be prohibited.
Actually, it's quite inaccurate interpretation of that. What it does do is, we are one of the few boards that allows two sections of public comment. We allow our first section, which anyone can discuss or bring anything up. But there's a second section of public comment that we have at the end that is only permitted for agenda items, is that from that meeting. What this actually does is it designates a specific portion of the meeting for that second section. Saying that we will provide that second time, it's not been in our policy before that we've given that time, it's just something that we've always done. This allow says that we are going to provide a specific portion of our meeting agenda for the public comment for up to thirty minutes on agenda items only, which is our second section of there's no bearing on the first one, no. No, actually, it's just, it actually gives them more latitude to speak, because we didn't ever have that in policy for the for the second speak.
Is the residence comments part, is that in policy?
That is in our board, it's in the section that we where we have our board meeting layout. That provides what our agenda is.
I just don't want to pass this and not have that as a statement.
I will say that Mike had the same question, he called me and we had, we, the superintendent was on the phone with him to clarify that, and that was, if you want to speak to the clarification that Dan gave us.
That basically explained the same part that it will not affect the initial public comment section that the public comment, not the justice, spoken word issue that we discussed. It's still a lot for all that type of thing.
I I'm just concerned about curtailing some of the open moment, I think, so. You know, but that.
And I, and I don't disagree, I don't know if there's a better way, Steve, to, because I was a little misunderstood on that, too. To have better communication and dialogue on these policies, so we understand the change, you know? We're not on a policy that even now can't be on, but to let us know what, I mean, to try to read it and understand it sometimes is difficult. And not for a discussion for tonight, but I was confused about that myself.
John, you were, you were at the policy meeting when you were discussing that?
Yeah.
You wanna, Wayne?
Yeah, I mean, it was an extensive discussion, it was more of a language, thinking up and through the direct to your point, I guess, maybe at some point we debrave from the policy to explain what we spoke about, I mean, there's two, there's three board members that are on there, and I know we got put back. You're supposed to meet earlier, and it got pushed back to last month, or when it was, but, yeah, I mean, certainly. You could sit through that a little bit better, maybe, and maybe highlight the points that have changed. Dr. Julie Bott, she chairs the committee, so I'm not gonna speak for her, but I do understand what you're saying, that that's obviously caused some confusion, at least one, three board members that kind of sit this out and discuss it separately.
Because I do remember for the last year roughly, we did allow people at the end to be able to talk about the agenda.
Yeah, we still do.
I know that, I know that, I'm just saying, I do remember us.
Yeah.
I don't know, a year or two.
We added that in about five years ago. Yeah, because we, we had people, I mean, same thing, we'd talk about things and then people felt when they got done, they wanted to say something about something that was brought up.
Yeah.
And then we had the discussion, we just said, well, we can allow another section at the end of the meeting, but limited to just the agenda items, you're not gonna bring up something that was just not on the agenda for it. It was never clarified in our actual policy that we provided that time. And so this is just a clarification that we are providing that time for that. And it does not delineate, delete any time from the public. So the first time, the first part of the agenda is still, or you know, it's public speaking, the agenda is still there.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I'm on the policy committee, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, though I tried to have accommodation to do that. So, I mean, I would be more comfortable with this even reiterated, that we have public comment within business statements. I don't know, do you have it in front of you?
If you want.
It went from a very simplistic, the board encourages public expression at board meetings. Board doesn't need a specific portion of this meeting agenda for this participation. The board may invite visitors to participate in its discussion of matters on the agenda. So it scratched that simple, the straightforward thing, and now has all the stuff that's written there, paragraphs. I personally am more comfortable with the simple, straightforward participation. So I don't know if that's something, you know, can we propose that that gets kicked back to policy committee?
Steve, who writes the language, is it the 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 language itself, not the intent of it? Is it Dan, is it lawyers, is it the policy committee?
It's BOSI, the the attorneys for BOSIs that deals with.
Dan tells them what we want, and that they write it?
No.
Yeah.
When policies are changed throughout the state and the districts have to act on them, that information comes from the state, to the BOSIs and the districts, to the committees.
Those kind of mixed back, some some things are required changes from the states, some are optional at our discretion. And yeah, usually it comes through BOSIs and their lawyers that wrapped up a lot of language.
Right, and exactly, as what Allison said, is that then you have policies that are tailored to the district. You know, for certain things, for example, you know, having a Native American reservation on school grounds, we're gonna have policies that apply to us for that. Where, you know, a neighboring district that does not have that would not have those policies.
Can I make a motion to send this back to the policy committee?
You can.
So what's your concern, so I understand.
I'm concerned about the the more stringent language that it's superseding over what was previously there, and I would like to see it reiterated, that this is not the only part of the meeting that will be open to public comment, I want, I'd like that to be reiterated, but there's two separate things that we've talked about here. To clarify, you know, for the public, in our own lines.
I mean, I personally don't see that it's a necessity, because we set our agenda every week, it's not changing, you see what's on there.
Oh, I think the motion does sound fair.
Would there be a second to that motion? All right.
Here's my second. I am better understanding of what it means, language. But if there's someone that's uncomfortable, if you can't hurt the policy by seeing it, it could be more comfortable, or someone can understand it. What do we lose, we're not losing.
Well, I mean, in the in the flip side of that, Rick, though, we, so we shouldn't have to worry about right now until that's done, having a second public speak at the end then. Because it doesn't provide a section for them to talk again second half. I'm I'm just playing devil's advocate in that regard, you know, I mean, I I see no problem with that, but it's been moved and seconded to send it back. Any discussion on being sent back? All right, those in favor of sending that particular policy back to the policy committee, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. All right. Just going through as written tonight for our vote. All right, Jay, I know you have the next one. And hold on, I just closed my agenda tab. Hey, what's the number, Jay?
It is thirty-four thirty, diversity, diversity, equity, and inclusion.
All right. Okay, go ahead.
Fair comment here, it says, though it is cloaked in appealing language, diversity, equity, and inclusion. I take serious issue with the policy that provides a toxic mentality that divides and further promotes stereotypes by broadly grouping people by identity traits. Such as race, sex, gender identity, orientation, etc., rather than considering the character of the individual. The current zeitgeist is this idea of equity, which effectively means equality of, I'm sorry, equality of outcome, rather than equality of opportunity. It is inextricably tied to critical race theory with its Marxist underpinnings of the oppressed versus oppressors. And seeing everything through a lens of group differences, levels of oppression and inequities. The state framework on this topic, I found startling to read and I forwarded to to the board previously. The DEI initiative has stirred controversy nationwide and seemed to have a distinctive political bent and ideology. This policy, I feel, is overly broad and pervasive, affecting nearly every aspect of the school. A quote from the the policy says, the district will strive to advance inclusive and culturally responsive teaching and learning through, but not limited to, the following means. Curricula in all content areas, books and instructional materials, pedagogical practices and professional development. Classroom grouping policies and practices. Student support systems for all developmental pathways. Full and equitable opportunities to learn for all students and multiple assessment measures, so it's very far reaching. Pervasive lens by which, you know, everything in the school is being viewed through. And if passed, this policy would would provide sweeping allowances for teaching of topics and affirming ideologies that many in our community would find controversial. And even antithetical to their personal beliefs. The second serving issue with the policy is its initiative for workforce diversity. This would seemingly undermine district efforts to hire the best candidates possible. And potentially favor identity traits over merit. Quoting from the policy's workforce diversity initiative, says the district will strive to create a workforce that is not only diverse and inclusive. But one that recognizes and values the differences among people. As part of this effort, the district will seek to A, recruit and retain a diverse workforce in all areas and at all levels. Thereby reducing stereotypes and preparing students for an increasingly global society. And B, provide staff with opportunities for professional development and cultural proficiency. My feeling is that the district should only seek to hire the best candidates possible and not to discriminate based on any identity traits. So how can the district strive to create a diverse workforce without actual discrimination, where candidate may receive extra consideration due to them being a part of a particular identity group? So in practice, I ask, you know, will extra points in the hiring process be made towards those who deviate most from straight white male? Is that the case? So in total, this is not a policy that is required by the state, this is something of our own doing here locally, that the superintendent brought forth. And I encourage my fellow members to vote the policy down.
All right. Any other comments from that, on that policy, before we move on to discussing any other ones? Why is my mic keep showing?
Well, the one that I, one we brought up, the workforce person, I don't know if anyone can answer, but Dan. What does he actually mean? I've always known, Dan, for sure. Always hired the most qualified people that he just feels is best for his students. I mean, I've seen it, I've seen it in he's really strong on it, he's not political. Will this restrict it? My question, and I don't know if anyone can answer, but Dan, I don't know, okay, I mean. Is there a point system, I keep mentioning the point system, I mean, I don't know what Dan's playing with.
I believe in Tom, I've asked you, I don't think he's gonna change his his, yeah, Tom's here, by the way. He's been here the whole time. I, I mean, he's not gonna change any system that he's using right now, from what I'm understanding, or actually you're using since you run the interview process.
There's no plans to alter any of the hiring systems or processes. Okay, I suppose even with that, I would ask, why, what's the language for, what what is actually meant by striving for diversity? That that does not mean that it will have any impact on what we're currently doing. I mean, I know, you know, equal opportunity deployment laws, which, you know. Effectively, you know, disregard and look blindly upon candidates and look only at the merit. So I'm I'm just concerned about the language that's in here, and why that's even, why this is even being brought forward.
Well, you could, yes, you're acting superintendent.
I think what I think what it means is that as we do the interview process, and we always look for the best candidate regardless of all those things that you read. And I think what it's saying is that you're not gonna impose your prejudice against any candidate based on those things, so they will be the best candidate no matter what that we will hire.
Yeah, I guess I just, I find the language of it, not so much equality, like equal opportunity for everybody, but actually this this guise of equity. So we're considering other factors other than the straightforward. Equal opportunity shot, you know, the best person by merit and character is hired rather than looking to these identity groups. Racial or gender or any of those other classifications, which seems that this agenda is like pushing forth, which happens completely just clear of it, so it's not required by the state, it seems just creating more problems.
Any other discussion?
My interpretation, I could also mean that they're making more concentrated effort to job two. Et cetera, to promote their candidates, all of my candidates with jobs and positions. And just concentrating on saying that you're just gonna back track Americans or plus, or solely. But still, keep your most quality. Try to put stronger, larger, cool candidates.
Yeah, now we tend always cast a wide deck, and finally, you got, select the most qualified person. But with the language of this, it seems like there's something else going on here that that is not so, so.
Anyone else on that policy?
I'm just gonna add, I was part of the middle school principal hiring process in in no way. It was the best candidate, and I, and I mean, it came down to two candidates, I mean, out of the three that we interviewed. And nobody was looking to give points to anybody. You know, it was an African American male, white female, or white female. I mean, we're looking at qualifications that run a building, can come in and take care of things for the long term. You know, they would be preferred, have to move on, and looking to embed themselves in the district, what experience that they have. And I mean, nobody gave any points to anybody, I mean, it was just, I was comfortable walking out of there, I know went to the next step, I mean. Interviewed with the heads and determination, and representation, I was very comfortable with candidates and what we had.
I'm glad to hear that, I I would hope that this policy would not derail that straightforward process. Though it seems the language and and giving the history of the DEI agenda, and you see it nationwide, you see, you know, people talk about it in different capacities. It seems like something very much differently, different is going on, so. Like I said, I encourage the the board to to vote against it, I know it's up for second reading at the next meeting. I think it's unnecessary, and I don't think it's helpful for the district.
All right, um, the other three policies there, anything? Okay. All right, then, um, I'd like to make a motion then, as we have this motion on the table to 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 accept these, I'd like to make a motion to waive the first and second reading to approve policy tonight, or disprove policy tonight of these five items. Is there a second for that? It's been moved and seconded.
Would you want to wait for second reading?
Correct.
Let me ask, I've never seen you do that before.
We have numerous times actually before.
Why would you want to do that?
Well, I just feel that this is something that I'm, I want to put the bed and be done with it either passing or not passing tonight.
I feel a couple, the whole board, they need some more time to look at this, the others who are here.
No. There's a motion on the table, and it's been seconded. A call for a vote, all those in favor of waiving the first and second reading and approving or disproving this, these policies tonight, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Abstaining? All right, motion fails. All right, then, all those in favor of accepting the first reading of these policies, please say aye. Aye. We have, yeah, we have to approve the first reading. So this is the first reading, so it would go to a second reading, yes. So for those five policies, all those in favor, please say aye for approving it. Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Okay, let's try this again. What was that? I'm approving them? Are you reading?
Yes.
You're abstaining also?
Yes, no, yes.
You're abstaining, okay, just making sure.
Yes, yes.
Oh, yes, to move them forward. Okay. All right, then, those are, it's four to. Right, but you said yes to with the first reading, okay, so it's four to one, or four to four dash zero one. All right, okay, aye. All righty, then, now that we've got that out of the way. External communicated, written communication to the board. External communicated, written communication to the board, we have one thing that came in from NISBA, we have a Christmas card that thanked us for doing our. Our winter or our winter, but our summer retreat that we did. So I just wanna let you guys know that NISBA sent us a little thank you card for that. Alright, uh superintendent's report.
Uh first, I'd like to have Mr. Stair give the board an update and discussion of the test distribution and test to stay.
Thank you. On test distribution, I'm happy to report to the board on the community that yesterday. We were here in this very room from three P M to five P M and we distributed fourteen hundred and twenty tests to our community. As part of the first shipment of tests that came from the state level. So we were happy with that number, we're also looking forward to tomorrow, which is gonna be four thirty to six thirty. Uh test distribution from the high school ALC, which is where we are right now. And we're looking forward to distributing even more tests, hopefully on top of what we did the other day. And also on test to stay. We're very interested in the test to stay program and learning more about it. We do have some level of concern regarding its sustainability and what I mean by that is. We wanna make sure that, uh you know, the state is able to continue with the volume of the shipment number that has been sent to us this first go around. So that we can continuously and serially test students that are, um, you know, in a quarantine. So that they are able to come back safely to school and not foster infection or further spread of the, the virus itself. So obviously, uh conducting the test to state program is really predicated on having enough tests as they come into us. So more to follow on that, we are getting more detail, doing a lot more research on that before we implement it. We just wanna make sure that we do it equitably, fairly and with consistency.
Number one, it's a great program and the concern is what you mentioned. Is the state gonna have enough, enough tests? Because it seems to be as short as all over the country. So are, are we? Can anyone get the kit even if there's not in quarantine or sentenced? Or is it, you have to be in quarantine or have sentenced COVID to request the test?
That's a really good question. So as far as the test distribution itself. Um it's designed primarily right now for distribution to our students, alright, uh only, and there's no design further than that at this point in time. As far as the test to state program, it's specifically designed for students that are in a quarantine, um due to an exposure at school.
My only concern was I would love to have everyone have a test as I don't wanna run out. On someone who has no symptoms or quarantine and then a week later, we have a hundred people and we can't test them all. That's my only concern. I'll let, and, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Valuable concern. Um I just also like to point out to the board that the districts in Ira County have banded together and we're working with Aviana Healthcare. To secure daily testing throughout the weekend on Saturday. We both, we have both A M and P M slots at various districts around the county. For instance, Niagara Weefield hosts our site on Thursday afternoons. So that availability for testing. Across county residents as well as individuals that work in our school district is there, has been there. Uh since the middle of October, so there's opportunity.
You like to continue?
Thank you. Uh you've all been handed the budget calendar. If you haven't had a chance to look at it, I think it was passed out last meeting too. If anybody has any comments, I'd welcome them. Otherwise, I think we're all set with those dates. If they align with the state requirements, so if you have any questions, please let me or the superintendent know. The Board of Ed walkthrough has been scheduled at Bunny Bunch. Uh the date has been shared with all of the Board of Ed members. Our school resource officer, Brandon Hall. Is, is moving on and we'd just like to thank him for his service to the district and welcome our new SRO Jonathan Smith. He started, uh, this month. Tuscor Indian School, uh the necessary capital improvement work is included in the Board of Regents' non-state aid budget. So they've pushed to have it included in the Regents' budget. Don Hoffman, who is our contact at New York State, shared that all the Niagara Weefield capital project needs were included. And his cost estimate for the work is just under twelve million dollars. It is now critical that that portion of the budget is not altered because we need those. Capital improvements in that school and we wanna thank everyone who has supported this cause to this point and ask the governor and the legislature. To make sure that the funding is finalized for those, the three schools. Construction will be starting late spring this year for the pole barn as approved by the Board of Ed Education and thank you again for approving that. We'll use that to store our equipment and maintain the life of that equipment longer than, than we can now with it being outside, so thank you. Board of Education. Uh our capital project committee, the next meeting is January twenty fourth at four P M here at the high school ALC. The Niagara Frontier League. Niagara Weefield School District was the most successful team this year, finished first place for the fall. With sixty-nine points and the next closest team was Grand Island, fifty-seven points, so outstanding job and congratulations to all the athletes.
Now we just do that supremacy for the winter and spring?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh as far as the weather update, right now they're expecting only one to three inches for this area, our school district area, so. Right now, there's no plans to do anything other than remain open. Um and once again, food service, um students can receive free breakfast and lunch daily until the end of the school year, whether you're in attendance or not. And for those students not in attendance, there's grab and go that can be picked up under the bridge between the high school and the middle school daily. That's all I have.
I have a question.
Sure.
Allison, I don't wanna put you on the spot if you don't have the answer. I'll definitely wait for Dan on this issue, but it's, it's concerning the, uh. The bill for storage.
Okay.
Okay, I know we voted on it and it was, and it's a great project.
Yep.
It says not to exceed eight hundred thousand. Do we have a, a more fine tuned price on that?
Eight hundred thousand was the amount the architect put together for everything we had initially included in that storage barn. And it was, uh, critical and dependent on how much money we could afford to put toward that because we're not taking loans out for that. And we're not using reserve funds, that's only funds that were, uh, excess funds from last year that we carried forward to. Actually build the, the bones of the barn, I'll say, the storage barn, so then as we move forward, because there's no real rush. As we move forward and we have funds available, we can then complete the pieces that we, uh, wanted to, to. Actually finish it, I'll say, like electric, like security and other things that, uh, insulation. There were, there were several things that, you know, it's not an emergency to get them done right now. It's more to get the bones of the thing done so we can get the equipment in there and store it. And as we move forward, there's other items that we, that, uh, we would like to add. As we have the funds to do so, it may take two, three, four years to finish, you know?
And the money is, is, is gonna allow for those other things.
Correct.
Okay, so we don't, um, so is cement going in it now? Do we know that? Cement floor?
It's going to follow whatever the New York State guidelines are for that building.
Then I'll wait, I, I am curious to see. What is actually going in it now and the present cost as we construct it today, not in the future. I, I'm interested in that.
Okay.
And, uh, and the reason why I'm asking that is the town just recently did one. Much bigger than this, sixty by one twenty, four fourteen foot doors, two man doors. Solar panels in the ceiling with gutters with cement, six inch cement, no electric for two hundred and five thousand dollars. And, and that's why I'm curious to see.
Yeah, and we can certainly get back to you on that. Their New York State Education Department requires. A higher level, I will say, of construction because it's in a school district, so we can get back to you and that's what's adding to the additional cost.
Are you saying you're willing to have the town build it for us? Um, any other questions of our fill-in superintendent? Alright, um, reports to the board from finance, there is the, um, discussion on the, on the budget calendar. Uh, anything that looks out of place that you see there? Alrighty then. Alright, um, items for board discussion? Any old business?
I'd like to, uh, reopen the conversation on hybrid.
Okay. Yeah, the old business. No, you, you're, go ahead, you do discuss it.
So I involved as a community, I, I was not able to attend the last two board meetings. I've appealed multiple times for reasonable accommodation. For medical documented issues. With, uh, having to wear a mask, uh, also now comorbidities as outlined. As a, as a reason to warrant hybrid classening that was decided by the board. I petitioned the board, I, I pleaded with each one here to understand what's going on. And I have gotten no resolve. I, I feel very uncomfortable. Not being accommodated for, for the needs that presented to the board. So i- is there situations by which we can do hybrid? What exactly are they? Like I said, I submitted, no, three. Medical documents to Dan, he's conveyed them to you and, and still we're, we're, we're at this place.
Oh, the board has, sorry, the board has to, would be, be the, as an entity, would have to. Agree on any accommodations at the last meeting. They basically had said unless we had anything documented prior to that meeting. That there were, uh, for comorbidities, that there was no option for hybrid and from discussion of certain people since that meeting. Um, I know that they are very upset that we didn't have, that we went with no, we didn't go with no hybrid whatsoever for no reason. And, uh, I know some members would like to revisit that piece. So, you know, you mean, you can make a motion to, um, to allow for hybrid. Again, uh. With whatever factors, but as of right now, there's, there is no.
Okay, well, I would make the motion, um, that the board allow for members to participate by Zoom hybrid. For documented, for reasons.
Gee, I thought we approved hybrid last year.
For anything that was documented prior to that meeting, yes. For comorbidities.
Someone with a history to do hybrid. Someone who has been trying to get documentation even prior to that meeting.
It would have to come back to the board if the documentation was, was provided after that meeting. For, it would have to come back to the board for another vote if documentation was provided after that meeting. So remember how we said that up into that meeting, if you provided documentation of a comorbidity.
Yes.
Then you could be hybrid. If that documentation came in after that meeting. That would be a new motion to then change our hybrid policy. After the.
To allow another board member?
What, for anyone that has any documentation after that meeting?
Well, I don't understand that. I mean, if we have a hybrid policy, put that.
I, I'm telling you though, what I, we, you know, with, we have to follow our board action in establishing that piece.
Okay, so. He says he's got more, he says more documentation, so it's gotta go back to Dan?
So we as a board now have to say that any documentation that came over will be acceptable for going hybrid from that point.
For that particular person?
For, for, for anyone, it's not just, stop, remember we said last meeting, it's not about an individual here.
I understand it.
It's, you know, but it's in general, it's, it was like the previous thing when he asked to go hybrid. And we said, but we, last meeting, we said that there is not gonna be any hybrid and that's why he couldn't go. So we had a last meeting for establish a hybrid policy. And we did, and now, and there was very specific that you had to have documented pieces for comor- comorbidities because there was nothing for. We're not delineating, uh, board members to be different than staff members and if they're not allowed to, to not wear masks when they're on school property and, or have an option to be. Uh, remote because of that, um, we weren't going to be different than that.
But he's been trying to get. And why couldn't we brought it up tonight? We've been trying to get.
Well, he, we're, we're here.
When, did you have more documentation that you said?
Yeah, uh, as of yesterday, I had another visit with my primary doctor, submitted documentation including now comorbidity.
Okay, well, you don't have to change stuff right there.
To Dan, I'm going forward to see, to which I did not receive accommodation for tonight, that's why I'm here.
And you wouldn't because there was no mechanism for us to allow you for accommodation because it was, it came in after what our date was. So your phone doesn't work? You don't know how to pick up a phone and call someone? Just curious.
Yeah, I, I, I said.
So you don't know how to pick up a phone and call some?
I'll, I'll read you the.
A text message, yes, so you don't know how to pick a phone up and call anyone?
No, that's not.
You don't? Okay, good, I'm just making sure I just clarified that, thank you.
Well, let me ask you, did you send a text to?
Okay, so yesterday I emailed Dan. And then today, I said, Steve, Dan should have forwarded you my doctor's note outlining my risk of COVID comorbidity. I'm requesting virtual accommodation, COVID is obviously currently spreading locally and I would like a way to perform my duties in a safe way. Will I be accommodated for tonight? To which I received no reply.
Okay, I mean, what's a man supposed to do? Call eighteen times? I mean, he sent written, uh, written documentation and it, and I'll have to parrot it down. His dad is not feeling it. I understand that, but Steve. This has become a political snowball on this board and you indicate.
Because of one person.
Well.
No, I'm done talking about it, Rick.
No, I know that, but I ain't right now.
But I, I, and.
But, but I'm saying to you, as you indicated something about two minutes ago, there's other board members that wanna eliminate it altogether. After twice, you're committed to doing it and then people are teeter tottering and then finally. I thought the right minds prevailed and two board members left upset. I mean, what, do we understand we're in a pandemic here? Fifty people as of the county today have died from this COVID, fifty. Many of them were not vaccinated, many of them were. I know a wedding just over the weekend, fifteen people right now contacted this virus. What are we doing? Why should you or Dan or anyone make a judgment if a doctor says. I have diabetes, I'm overweight, I have lung problems, I'm claustrophobic. Who are we to judge?
But, but, Rick.
What is it gonna take? Cause I've heard this word several times on different topics, perception. What's it gonna take for people not to worry about perception? For one or two of us to die? To, to attend a meeting? I was just in a van for an hour and a, a, a virtual meeting with the town, they understand it. This is a political thing here. It's not right, Steve. I'm not saying you don't have the votes to do it because I know you do. I'm not saying it, but that's not, doesn't make it right. We have an issue, we have a board member, it could be another board member tomorrow.
You're, you're, we're done, we're done with this discussion. Jay, you can make, you can make your motion, if you wanna make a motion to discuss it, but Rick, again. You have been on the board for ten years, you know that there, the board voted on something a specific way. That, that means that there is, even if I texted him back, since he doesn't know how to use the phone to actually call people like, you know, normal adults do. That you, there was no mechanism that the board had put in place. That would allow him to go remote at that time until we took action tonight and someone brought it up for action.
When normal adults, they texted you and then they replied back, um, I would make the motion for the board to allow hybrid out of the request of its board members.
You would need a second? All right, I think we've had enough discussion of this. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Nay. Abstaining? Motion fails. All right, any other old business? All right, new business, uh, we have the one item. I call for a motion that be it resolved, uh, that the Board of Education, having considered the December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one appeal of the December sixth, two thousand twenty-one written decision of the superintendent's schools hereby sustains that the decision and denies the appeal. Is there a second for that? Second it. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
I'm staying because I wish.
Oh, you were, yeah, you were not in the hearing. Okay. So it's, uh, would be four to zero one. All right, uh, public comments? Is there any other new business? All right, public comments? Uh, board member comments?
Yeah, the only thing I'm gonna say is, I wish we stacked. Several years ago, there was some political politics in the school board, then it straightened out for three or four years. And politics is back in and it's about an individual. And I'm expecting nine leaders, which is you and Dan, to straighten it out. Because it's breaking up this board. I know it, I've seen it, I've seen it on many boards. It's breaking up this board. It don't make no difference who's got the votes, because the votes can change next year, Steve. It's breaking up this board.
It, it has nothing to do with votes. I don't care. I really don't care what you're saying anymore right now, Rick.
I don't really care what you think.
You're done.
I, I wish you as the president of this school board and Dan Lottich, the ultimate leader, even though he don't likes to get into more politics, should straighten it out because these are destroying this school board. That's all I need to say.
There are two individuals doing that right now, Rick, and I've looked at both of them just now. All right, I call for a motion to adjourn. I call for a motion to adjourn.
I would like to speak.
Is there a second?
Is there a second for me to speak?
Do I have to provide for board members to speak then? This is what's gonna happen, Steve?
Evidence here.
Go ahead.
May I speak? Thank you. Just want for the record that I'm here against the recognition of my doctor providing documentation. And I'm really struggling, uh, wearing this mask and I'm concerned having comorbidities of having to be here as well. I also want to say that for the knowledge of the board, uh, I know there's a lot of new changes to COVID policies with testing, students, vaccination clinics, things like that. And a lot in the pipeline with, with what's going on. And I had a conversation with the superintendent, um, wondering if he was abreast at the, the risk factors for children with COVID. But they were, he was not, I informed him, uh, effectively five hundred, some, uh, fifty million children had died of COVID, which is approaching statistical zero. It's very limited risk from what data seems to be showing. He was not aware of this. I also asked him if he was aware of reports, um, for vaccine injury that were happening. Issues of such as myocarditis with young men, particularly in shape athletes having heart issue because of that. His response was, Jason, I'm not having this conversation with you. But, um.
All right, anyone else? All right, I'll call for a motion to adjourn then. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed or abstaining, motion carries. We're adjourned.